The Lake Mills City Council's regular meeting to order. Misty, can you start with a roll call, please?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quidno?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll now move on to item four on the agenda, election of council president. So now would be the time to open it up to nominations.
Will the chair recognize me?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Lisa Curler.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor?
Was there a second?
Dan, does anyone need a second?
I don't think they need a second on it.
Attorney Drescher was indicating that a second wasn't being, isn't necessary for the nomination.
Okay.
Seeing as there are no other nominations, when those in, do we do a roll?
Yep, roll call.
Misty, could you take a roll call for the nomination of Lisa Curler to city council president?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Congratulations, Lisa.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I guess I need to move over. Don't forget your name tag. Don't forget your name tag. Hi. I'm going to switch chairs.
The what?
Oh, no, that's not hers. That's mine.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate the vote of confidence and I look forward to continuing to serve our community in this new role. So I guess I'm in charge of running the rest of the meeting. So now, the next agenda item, number five, is the election of the council vice president. So I'll open the floor to nominations.
I nominate.
Oh, I get, I got ahead of you, Steve. Sorry. I think Ms. Quidno was first by a nose.
I'll nominate Catherine Bishop.
Are there any other nominations? I'd like to nominate Greg Waters. Are there any other nominations? Three times. Are there any other nominations? Okay, I will close the floor for nominations. So, Mr. Drescher, should we do them one at a time or just ask people to vote for their preferred candidate?
I think either, either route is acceptable so long as it's clear. I think that's, it's up to your preference. The first nomination was for Catherine Bishop. So if you're going to do them one at a time, I'd do them in the order that they were received.
Okay. Well, I would propose that we just do one vote and that each council member say the name of the candidate that you are voting for. So the two candidates are Catherine Bishop and Greg Waters. So Misty, can you call the rule?
Mrs. Bishop?
Catherine Bishop.
Ms. Quidno?
Catherine Bishop.
Mr. Fields?
Mrs. Bishop.
Ms. Curler?
Greg Waters.
Mr. Waters?
Sorry about that. I was muted. I gotta get used to this. Catherine Bishop.
Catherine Bishop received four of the votes.
Okay, congratulations, Mrs. Bishop. So if you want, you can change chairs or we can wait till next meeting, whatever you prefer. That's fine. Maybe we've probably had enough disruption tonight. Okay, so item number six is the correction and/or acceptance of the city council meeting minutes of April 4th, 2023. And I believe we learned last meeting that we don't need to formally vote on those. We can simply accept them. So are there any corrections or comments on the meeting minutes from April 4th? Greg or Steve, anyone online? Okay, if there's no comments or corrections, then I'll accept the April 4th, 2023 minutes into the record. Next item is correspondence. Mrs. Bishop, can I start with you?
Okay, yes. I had correspondence asking when the memorial area on Commons Park would be completed, specifically moving one of the monuments and setting the concrete and raising the flagpoles. And the response I received from the grounds and facilities director was that that project was supposed to or is being worked on. It should be completed before Memorial Day. So I relayed that to the person asking. I received communication from Ms. Trier regarding Rock Lake testing and that tests for the spiny water flea are negative in Rock Lake. So that's a good thing. And those are my correspondence.
Okay. Ms. Quidno?
I didn't have very much correspondence, but I did receive a phone call with regard to there being some difficulty with rent regulation up in the new area of where, up by Brewster Drive in that area. Those apartment buildings are experiencing some rent increases at a, at a pretty steady but expecting, or not expectant rate. So there were some questions about that and what the city is able to do. Besides that, nothing else.
Okay, Mr. Fields?
I had the same two emails about the DNI report and the Veterans Memorial. And then I just had one phone call of thanks for serving the community and keeping up the good work. That's it for me.
Great. Mr. Waters?
I had two additionals. One was regarding the College Street trees that were removed for the upcoming project. And the other was Sandy Beach Bait Shop about making that food friendly so that we could possibly sell some food out of that bait shop, which I know Sandy Beach is one of our agenda items tonight, so I'm sure that'll come up in that discussion.
Okay. Thank you all. I also received the email that we all received about the testing in Rock Lake and the absence of spiny water flea. I received a constituent call about street tree planting and privacy fences on Stony Road. And I made two contacts during this last couple of weeks. One was with Representative Barb Dittrick, both at her listening session and through correspondence, talking with her about the local funding challenges that we face here in this city. And I also made a contact with the Lake Mills leader regarding, there were some errors in the, of the reporting on the ATV ordinance in their two weeks ago issue. So I made a contact with them. All right. So next is the questions and public comment period. We don't have any hearings tonight. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comments may also be made at this time for items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meetings law discourages action by the council on items that are not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. State your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign in sheet provided. If there's anyone attending online that wants to speak, please type your name and address into the chat feature. So we'll go here in the room first?
Hi, my name is Mary Schmager, 327 South Ferry Drive. I was very excited to see the Sandy Beach Restaurant RFP on the agenda, and I am here to share a few of my perspectives after reviewing the materials. My overall conclusion is the RFP is too broad and confusing, and it will make it very hard to make a good decision. I will start with just a brief reference to the introduction in the first paragraph, quote, "operate a restaurant slash bar and slash or concession facilities," unquote. So this begs the question, what does the city council really want? And what are the specific requirements and parameters that will drive this decision? The RFP, as I read it, is positioned such that the restaurateur is analyzing the survey and creating their destiny. I propose the city council should be using the results to frame our destiny and the scope, using words that are specific and direct, like will, won't, must, require, desire, minimum requirements, to be as specific as possible. An example is in the general goals, it states high-quality dining experience. And I would speculate that if you all wrote three words to describe what high quality means in the context of that goal, you would all have very different answers and so kind of starting off on different pages. And by the way, the survey actually states the word casual quite often as being very high percent likely of, of the word casual dining environment, yet that was not noted at all in the RFP. So I'm going to share a few gaps and I, I'm going to frame them in the form of questions for consideration, because you'll see my recommendation is that I feel that more very specific answers to these will help guide a better decision and better responses from those that are replying. For service expectations, what experience do we desire? So as an example, do we expect lunch and dinner seven days a week from Memorial Day to Labor Day, just on weekends and holidays? And what is the, are the, are the expectations for Lake Mills for the balance of the year? Will this be the only food service option or will you allow food carts, either in a gap or with this restaurant? Do we want a banquet center? What are the expectations regarding a concession window? Or are we sure we want alternatives? I'm guessing so for beach patrons. Is there a specific beverage license required and liquor license provided or required? Any restrictions? Would we allow a brewery to come in with a great restaurant menu at our cost and brew their beer there? Are there any restrictions? Are we confident where the patrons are coming from? I know in the plan that I saw quite, quite a while ago, we were committing to, I think, replacing 100 trailers or maybe there's some creative, significant patron-centric plan that will have those patrons there at the trailer park or accommodations for boat up customers. Is there a maxim area for the footprint of the building? There was a conversation at one of the recent past meetings regarding the park, board saying, yes, this is a park as a reminder. And so that was missing also. Timeline regarding the selection of the schedule and expectation of a grand opening, I would just think that's best practice to have very specific timelines. And then the last note that I had as I was reviewing the RFP is regarding financial parameters. And what is the desired spend? And how much of a tax increase, if there is one, are you willing to take to make this happen? So I feel that the material itself could be a great proof of concept. So if we were looking to not make decisions and that we do not really know what we want and desire at that location, that a proof of concept, as we're kind of fishing around for ideas and trying to get innovation started and thought, started by restaurateurs or business owners, that this would be a great proof of concept. But my recommendation is to be much more specific and diligent framing the request so that specific requirements are clear. It'll help those submitting the responses and it will really help with decision-making. So I want to thank you for listening and thank you for your commitment to Lake Mills.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Schmager? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Steve Quant. I'm at 319 South Ferry Drive. And I look forward to a new restaurant at Sandy Beach. I think it's a great idea. I too reviewed the RFP that you're considering tonight, and I encourage you to make some additional modifications to help you make a better decision and to help the restaurant owners provide you with a really meaningful proposal. And I'll give you a couple of examples. Are parking fees to enter the park actually seriously being considered? As a restaurant visitor, I would not looking, look forward to paying a fee to go in and visit a restaurant. And as a restaurant owner inside that park, I would think that that would have limitations on the number of people that might come to my restaurant. So I encourage you to, to, to give some consideration to that. There are several mentions of fees in the RFP that the city is going to be charging, fees for events, for example, and then fees for, as a percent of revenue and a percent of gross profit margin. I think these need some real definition on what activities they are meant for and how much you really expect to charge for those services. The people that are presenting your proposals need to know that kind of information. The RFP asks for menu prices, for example, but there is no estimate on when the restaurant is going to open. So it's pretty difficult to anticipate what the food costs might be or what the labor costs might be at the time the restaurant opens. So therefore, giving you an idea of how much the food's going to cost on the menu is going to be hard. The RFP says that the city manager can further negotiate. Your restaurant owner needs to know exactly who the final decision maker is. Is it the city council? Is it the city manager? Who will make that decision? They, out of respect to them, should know that. And, and they need to know on what criteria the decision will be made and who's going to make that decision. So I encourage you to decide exactly what it is that you want. And then ask for proposals on how you would like your needs to be met. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Quant. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Quant? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Okay, I will close the public comment then, and we'll move on to agenda item nine, the city manager's report.
The only thing I'd like to make note of, I sent an email to the city council yesterday, but the, as of noon on Friday, all signage for the ATV, UTV have been posted. So as of noon, the ordinance was in full effect. We have sent notification to the leader, our social media pages, the city page, as well as the Lake Mills Police Department page, as well as put it on the city website. So it has been communicated out. You may have seen some already enjoying the new access, but the ordinances is now in effect and ATV, UTV usage is now permitted on all city streets.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions regarding the attachments to the city manager's report this week? I just had one question, Sam, for you, and I think this probably comes up every year on one of the tax registers. There's approximately a $3 million transfer that's identified as a tax settlement, and we don't usually see numbers that big on those registers. Can you just explain for everyone what that is?
This particular check, it is the tax increment received to the, the taxing jurisdictions, the TID districts. So each of the taxing jurisdictions gets a portion of the tax increment. So that is in there. And also I transferred all debt, the debt service levy to the local, it's LGIP, it's local government investment pool. So I put all the debt levy monies in that account until the debt is paid. And then as the debt gets paid on a bi-annual basis, I'll pull the, the money back into the money market to cover those debt payments.
So this is basically a higher interest earning?
Yeah, it's over 4% right now.
Place to put the money?
Yep.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I did just want to highlight in the police chief's report, congratulations to Officer Johnson on receiving the American Legion Award. I think that was, her photo was on the cover of the report. Okay, we'll go to item number 10, which is council member board reports and acceptance of minutes from the public works board of March 14th, 2023. I'm serving on the board for that meeting, so I'd be happy to answer any questions. Okay, hearing none. I will accept those minutes into the record. And we'll move on to agenda item, item 11, council business. Letter A is our elders' presentation regarding a five-year CIP preliminary financing plan. This is not a decision item. So Drake, I'll turn it over to you to introduce this.
John Cameron is here from Ellers, our financial advisor. And I had asked them to put together kind of an analysis of our, where we are with managing our debt and how it looks with the CIP that we currently have in order to gain a better understanding of it and present to you on what the city's outlook and current position is with its debt management. So I will pull, I will hand it over to John and he'll lead us through a presentation.
Okay. Well, good evening, everybody. John Cameron with Ellers. My colleague Lisa Trevituski is also here this evening. So between the two of us, we're the two advisors that work for the, the city of Lake Mills in terms of putting this plan before you this evening. As it was indicated, this is really more for, for information purposes. You know, looking at the next five years of, of capital improvement projects and, you know, under the general assumption right now that those projects are going to have to be debt financed, just providing some preliminary information on what those debt sizings might look like on an annual basis, what the breakdown of debt might be between general obligation and revenue bond debt. And then on the general obligation side, what is the projected impact to property tax rates for, if you would move ahead with all of the projects in your five-year plan? And then on the utility side, looking at a measure of what's called debt coverage, which is a, a measure that revenue bonds have to adhere to in order to be able to issue the debt. And it's a, a measure of financial strength within the utilities. So we'll talk through that this evening as well. One of the things that I think, you know, as you're looking at the presentation this evening and considering, you know, what this might look like over the next five years, you know, certainly, you know, these projects likely can and will change, you know, on an annual basis. The other thing to point out is that the assumption is that they're all debt financed at this point. You know, certainly, the decision lies with, with you all on an annual basis to consider the use of cash if it is available and if you have it. And certainly, you know, you want to adhere to your, your fund balance policy. But, you know, certainly that, that, you know, may improve things in terms of downsizing a potential debt offering. So with that being said, just, just from a high level standpoint, and I'll, I'll start going through the tables, the packet that we put together is fairly lengthy. So don't worry, I will not go through every sheet in the, in the packet. A lot of that is for your information only, but I will highlight some of those items. In terms of the issuance of debt, municipalities have really two ways to go about issuing debt in Wisconsin. There's the issuance of general obligation debt, and there's the issuance of revenue bond debt. General obligation debt is backed by the full faith and credit of the taxpayers of the city. And under state law, municipalities in the state of Wisconsin are limited to the amount of general obligation debt that they can issue. And that limit is no more than 5% of your total equalized value. So, you know, one of the questions, you know, if you're new to the issuance of debt, that you might be thinking is why don't, why doesn't a community just always issue general obligation debt instead of revenue bond debt? And that's why. So revenue bond debt is backed by the revenues of the utility. So in this case, you have a combined pledge, pledging the revenues of the electric, water, and sewer utilities together. When we do a debt offering on a revenue bond basis, we are still going through the allocation with the intent that, you know, if it's water-related, the water utility and it, through water rates, is expected to, you know, pay its debt or pay its share of the debt, sewer and electric likewise. So that's the, the expectation going forward. When we talk about the issuance of general obligation debt, general obligation debt, because it is backed by an irrepealable property tax levy, generally comes with the lowest interest rates because those who are purchasing your debt, the, the underwriter who is purchasing the debt, and then those on the secondary market who are purchasing portions of your, your debt, know that at the end of the day, there is an irrepealable property tax levy behind that. So because that is, you know, the safest form of debt, it generally comes with the lowest interest rate. Just, you know, a notch below that would be revenue bond debt. Revenue bond debt is backed, again, by the revenues of the utility. And at the time that the debt is issued, there is a resolution that, that is adopted that pledges for the life of the bonds, the city will keep its user rates in a position that it will first be able to pay its operating and maintenance expenses. And then the amount of revenue that is left over after it pays its operating and maintenance expenses will be at least 125% of the annual principal and interest payments on all outstanding revenue bonds. The higher that coverage threshold is, the stronger the health of the utility is. So the higher, you know, the amount of net revenues after you pay your operating expenses, you go higher than 125%, the stronger, you know, it indicates that the, the health of all three utilities are. So that's, I guess, a little bit of debt 101 as we kind of get into the analysis, but certainly happy to answer questions as, as we go. So what I have is a memo that was sent out on April 13th that I'm going to talk about that was in the, included in the packet. And looking at the first table, table one, which is the existing general obligation debts, or what we would commonly refer to as the city's base case. So this is your existing debt profile before any new debt were to be issued. So just to walk from left to right on that page, the, the first column beyond the year shows the total annual principal and interest payments for general obligation debt within the city. So in 2023, just to point out that first year here, the total general obligation debt payments, principal and interest, is a little over $2.8 million. However, not all of that $2.8 million is paid through the property tax levy. There are portions of the, the general obligation debt service payments that are abated by other sources of revenue. You've got developer payments as one, special assessment revenue as another. You've got portions of debt that is related to TID 3, TID Tax Increment District 3, Tax Increment District 4, Tax Increment District 5. And then there's a portion of general obligation debt that is payable by the water utility. So, you know, from a utility perspective, it's not always a given that the city would go right to the issuance of revenue bond debt for utility-related projects, especially for, for smaller projects where it might be, make more sense to just group it into a general obligation debt financing. So of the $2.8 million, approximately 1.9 million actually hits the, the property tax levy. The, the remaining amount is, is paid through these other abatement sources. So when you take the total amount of, of debt levy divided by your TID out equalized value, you come up with a tax rate of $2.65 on an equalized basis for paying debt. Okay? So of the total mill rate, $2.65 goes to pay debt, existing debt. See that beyond, before the issuance of any new debt, that tax rate is projected to go to $2.52 next year. The, the total tax levy is, is staying relatively stable, going from 1,961 to 1,945. But we're projecting that, you know, the, the amount of equalized growth will still continue to trend upward, driving that tax rate down. And then it starts to go to $2.06, $1.95, and it, and it continues to drop from there. So as we, you know, come into the picture and, you know, staff says, hey, Ellers, can you help us look at this five-year plan? And what does this look like? you help us look at this five-year plan and what does this look like in terms of, you know, the debt that's coming online and the impact on the total debt levy and total, the total mill rate? We can really start to look at what are some of these projected increases or drops to the total debt levy and then the mill rate and start to kind of plan around that to try to keep the total debt levy as stable as possible, and then, you know, correspondingly looking at the total tax rate. The last column just shows for a home or property valued at $200,000, that two, that mill rate of $2.65, what that equates to is an annual tax payment of $530.56, and then you can see it correspondingly going down annually as that mill rate starts to decline. Any questions on that first page? Okay. The next page, Table 2, is the capital improvement plan that was provided to us for 2023 through 2027. And just from a high-level standpoint, what is identified in the plan is a little over $24 million of planned capital improvement projects. If you further break that down kind of towards the middle of the page, what's identified is the, for the projects that are general obligation debt projects, non-utility projects, basically, we've got $17.7 million of identified general obligation borrowing between 2023 and 2027, and you can see it kind of broken out by year. And then about $6,350,000 of planned revenue bond issues from 2023 through 2027. Any questions on that page? Again, that's just kind of a high-level overview of the CIP.
I just have a question, maybe more for Mr. Daly. Several of the items in this plan that are over $1 million, most of them are streets. There's a couple exceptions within the parks. I'm guessing that's for Sandy Beach Restaurant, but I'm not sure. There's in 2024, there's about $2 million, and in 2025, there's 1.3 million. Do you recall off the top of your head what the?
I believe you're correct that they are. One over $2 million is certainly Sandy Beach.
Would be for like a restaurant building, presumably.
And we moved that to 2024. It had originally been in 2023, understanding that, that it's not, it's just not going to happen this year. The one point, the second one there, I would have to do more research on, but I think it's likely that it is also related to Sandy Beach, perhaps with some of the infrastructure improvements that need to go in, that need to happen in the mobile home park, but I would have to confirm that. I do not have that memorized off the top of my head.
That's okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for John at this point?
I don't have a question for John, but a follow-up to Mr. Daly. The streets, there's a streets about between 1.3 and 2.9 million between those four year, five years. I'm not really sure, are we using TID money for any of that? Or is this coming, like, what exactly are we looking at for the streets? And I thought that we had other means to pay for the streets.
We do not, no. So the, we have, Duane is online, if you can chime in as to the streets that are coming up, well, within this five-year plan. Duane, I know next year we have Milton Street, and then after that, I can't recall.
Good evening. I have been searching for the documents. Milton Street is next. I believe it is then Prospect from memory, which is Prospect, Moss, and a portion of Mulberry, which is a rather large one, might be the increase that you are speaking of, Ms. Quidnow? And I believe Mr. Daly is correct, although while the meeting's going on, I'll continue, while the presentation's still going on, I will pull up the CIP documents and I will be able to further answer some of your questions. But I do believe Mr. Daly is correct with regard to the Sandy Beach Restaurant and then the next phase in the Sandy Beach rehabilitation, but I will confirm. Thank you.
Thanks, Duane. Thank you, Mr. Daly.
And just to kind of jump in on that, in terms of 2024 for parks, that is correct for the Sandy Beach Restaurant. Moving along, on the next page, Table 3, is the proposed, or at this point, I would say very preliminary, capital improvement financing plan out through 2027. And what it shows is that, you know, for 2023, so this, and this, you know, is relatively solidified for this year, the planned issuance of 2.5 million of general obligation bonds, and then on the revenue side, 2,275 of planned total revenue bond issues. There is a small portion of the city's capital improvement plan that is not bond-eligible under state statute. There's certain projects that are listed in statutes that are not able to be financed through bonds. And again, bonds are anything in terms of repayment that are between 10 and up to 20 years in terms of their total repayment. Anything from zero to 10 years in terms of total repayment are considered notes. So for 2023, there's approximately 270,000 of projects that would likely be financed through a local bank note. In 2024, there's the 5,40,000 of preliminary debt, as well as a little over $1 million of planned revenue bonds. And you can see kind of going across the page out through 2027, what the annual planned general obligation and revenue bond projects are for debt sizing. But, you know, generally speaking, what we're looking at is an annual issuance for general obligation and for revenue bond debt at this point. You know, when it comes to, you know, any of these projects or any of these years, we certainly are always cognizant of the opportunity to potentially combine two years' worth of projects into a single borrowing if we can. Certainly would help in terms of if the interest rate environment is favorable, but that also, you know, is kind of predicated on the knowing your project amounts and being ready to, you know, borrow for or bundle for two years' worth of projects. From a planning standpoint, what we're looking at is just showing you kind of what that annual impact is, so we're looking at a planned borrowing each year. And I think, you know, that might be more likely on the revenue side compared to the general obligation side, where we can, revenue bonds are a little bit more expensive in terms of their issuance, just because they come with a debt service reserve. So if we can kind of double up on projects, you know, we might look to do so as long as we have sufficient debt coverage and, you know, we're ready to go from a project standpoint.
John, this is Greg. Can I interrupt real quick? As I look at that 2024, the 5 million's a pretty big, pretty big number, and I go back and look at the graph before where we're talking about our capital improvement plan and reviewing the 2024 items, I see a special assessment which isn't in any other year for almost, almost $1 million. Could I get some background on what that special assessment's all about?
I believe that would be, that would be the, a phase of the Brookstone development, and so the city fronts the costs of the installation of infrastructure out there for a new phase, and then the city receives the payments on those back from the sale of the lots out there. So that's consistent with the development agreement we have with Riverwood Holdings is the, is the name of the developer. And so that is the, that's what that dollar amount is.
Is that the amount that we just put off? We had an agenda item on it a couple of months ago.
Yeah. Yeah. We are, we're still talking with the developer, but at this, at this point, it does look like it will be delayed and that we may bid it again in the, in the fall at the developer's request to see if the environment improves for single-family home development. But, correct, that's Phase, Brookstone Phase 8.
So I'd like to take a closer look at those 2,024 numbers. That 5 million's a pretty big number, and maybe we can level that out somehow in the future? Back to you, John.
I'm sorry, Greg, it looks like about, it, that is a pretty big one, but overall, the average that I'm calculating for every single year is around $5,500,000 or so. So while that may seem like a huge hit, when we look at the overall, the five years, there is a much smaller amount in 2027 that we don't have to necessarily feel as much of a hit. So that's.
Usually, it's around that 3 million number, but Sandy Beach is what's probably bumping that number up in 2024. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page as we look at that 2024 number and understand what type of debt that we're taking on as a city.
I think that's a very good point, Greg, and I think you're right that moving Sandy Beach from this year to next year makes next year's number bigger. Also, we've talked in the Public Works Board about how the streets plans are quite variable from year to year depending on what street project is queued up for each given year, and you can see that in the different line items. So there is some fluctuation that's a little bit hard to avoid, I think.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this point? Okay, John, thanks.
Okay, no problem. The next set of tables, going from Tables 4 all the way out through Table 14, what this shows, and this is more just for your reference, is the estimated annual principal and interest payments by purpose for each of the bonds. So, you know, for streets, parks, fire example in 2023, but you can see it, you know, for each issue running out through 2027. So I won't go through each page individually. We'll kind of talk through it collectively when we look at Table 15, which is the total estimated tax impact on the general obligation side, and then Table 16 talks about it on the revenue side. But, but just, just from a high-level summary standpoint, we are kind of taking off from a recent March bond sale, which was a little bit higher watermark in terms of where interest rates were at that time for a comparable credit at a AA-rated basis, plus an additional 50 basis points for potential market movement. So 50 basis points would be half of, half of 1%. So 100 basis points is 1%. And then we're adding cushion to that annually, assuming that, you know, interest rates may continue to rise. Obviously, if they don't, it's only to the betterment of the, of the plan. If you jump all the way then to Table 15, and hopefully that gives you some comfort that Holy Cowie's not going to go through all of these pages in gory detail. Table 15 is the total impact of the financing plan on a general obligation basis. So on the left-hand side of the plan in blue is the same base case debt profile that we talked through on Table 1. So that shows you kind of the pre-debt standpoint, and then we have the total amount of debt coming in for 2023, and then it's a sum of the issues for 2024 through 2027, kind of midway through the columns in orange. So it shows the total estimated annual principal and interest payments. And again, those, those principal and interest payments will be locked in on the actual day of bond sale. So as we talk about, say, 2023, from a timeline standpoint, I think it's likely that we'll be back before you in May seeking authorization to move forward with the financing for 2023 for general obligation and revenue bonds, with the sale potentially occurring in June. So on that day of sale, we'll take bids in, usually in the morning, between 9:00 and 11:00. It's a competitive sale environment. Bids will be submitted at a specific time. We'll tabulate those bids and then be back before you that evening with the bond sale results. And at that time, the interest rates by maturity is what the, the underwriters are bidding on. They're also bidding on the total price of the bonds, and that includes their underwriters' discount, which essentially is their fee for purchasing the debt. So those are locked then on the, on the day of sale, so you won't have variable rate debt. You will have a prepayment feature, really with all of these debt issuances, which really has been the past practice of the city. So you'll have the ability to potentially refinance or prepay the debt, generally about eight years after the, the issuance standpoint on a 20-year bond issue is what is generally customary. So when we look at just the total impact of the plan, in 2023, we've got approximately a $1.9 million total net debt service levy, and I am in the columns on orange. At the top, it says debt service levy, and the first column in that is total net debt service levy. So that's, that's the total amount of general obligation debt minus the abatement sources. So going to approximately 2.1 million in 2024, staying relatively stable in 2025, and then starting to increase in 2026 to 2.3 million, to 2.5 million in 2027, and then to approximately 2.6 million in 2028, and then we start to come back down. And, and the reason obviously for that is because we stopped the analysis in terms of debt sizings at 2027. So one of the things that I think, you know, is nice to see about this plan is, you know, obviously, it is an increase to your, to your total debt burden, it is an increase to your levy and your, your total mill rate for these projects, but it's relatively linear over, over time, and you see, you know, kind of that drop. If you look at the next set of columns under taxes, you have, the first column is the total tax rate for debt service. We really kind of top out at a tax, a projected tax rate for debt at $2.88 per thousand in 2027, and then we start to come back down. So as you look at your next round of CIP projects in, in 2028 and beyond, it naturally kind of lends itself to layering in, you know, those debt service payments depending on how, you know, what the, what the next round of capital might hold. If the next round of capital is smaller, then you might actually still see a declining tax levy and a declining tax rate for, for debt. What you see in the last two columns is the total amount of taxes being paid on a $200,000 property for debt, and then the change between the total with the, with these issues being built in compared to the existing total, assuming no new debt. So in total, a home or property valued at $200,000 between 2023 all the way out through 2047, that total impact dollar-wise is about $4,300. If you look at the next page, Table 16, what this shows is your total general obligation debt capacity and how the plan impacts your total borrowing capacity. So again, that limit is no more than 5% of your total equalized value. You're, you have a total limit as of 2000, at the end of 2022, of about 39.2 million. At the end of 2022, you're at 52% of your debt limit with a little over $20 million of total principal outstanding. As we look at layering in the new debt and assuming continued growth rate, just over 4% in terms of your equalized value, we really top out at approximately 57% of your total debt limit, which, you know, really, in, in our perspective, is, is very doable. When we get, you know, north of, say, 60 When we get, you know, north of, say, um sixty, seventy percent, you know, that's where your, your debt burden really starts to get stretched. And obviously, we never want to see you go uh really north of seventy-five percent of your total uh debt capacity, or if you are, it's only for a year or two, and then you start to come back down. Um and, and certainly, you know, if you continue to grow higher than four percent, that increases your amount of debt capacity. And conversely, if you have some low-growth years, and I don't think we have to go back in time too, too far uh over the last decade to think about coming out of the recession, some of the low uh, uh growth years in terms of equalized value that may constrain this plan a little bit, you know, both on a tax rate standpoint in terms of your tit-out value, but also in terms of your borrowing capacity on a tit-in value standpoint. So that's a lot of information to throw at you this evening. I apologize. Um but, you know, on the general obligation standpoint, that's kind of the end of the, the presentation on the GOs. From the GO perspective, we'll hit revenue bonds briefly, um because I know you've got another, you know, series of agenda items here. But any questions? Okay. Last page, and then I promise you're, you're done with us for this evening. Just the, the revenue bond debt. And what we're looking at is 2023, the projected debt coming on in 2023, and then the total debt coming on through 2027 related to the utilities. And as I indicated uh at the beginning of the presentation, really what we're looking at and, and what we have to adhere to is, is what's called the additional bonds test when revenue bond debt is, is being issued. And that is, again, when we look at the total amount of revenues for all three utilities, minus the cash expenses for all three utilities, that net amount of revenue that is left over uh before we make our debt service payments has to be at least a hundred-and-twenty-five percent of your existing revenue bond debt, principal and interest in any one given year, plus the principal and interest of the debt that you're taking on. Okay? So what we're looking at here is um total debt coverage ratios that are over uh two percent when we look, or two, I'm sorry, not two percent, two times debt coverage with the minimum threshold being one-twenty-five. So it tells us that, you know, this debt can safely be taken on. You know, certainly if it's allocable to the water utility and the sewer utility and electric utility, we're wanting to, to make sure that those uh, uh utilities have the uh ability to actually pay the debt, and we're not uh having one utility subsidize another. Um so we're, you know, further going into, to detail on the water and the sewer and the electric side to make sure that, you know, those, those utilities can stand on its own two feet. But we have uh debt coverage ratios, both 2023 and beyond, that, you know, at the low-water marker at about one-point-seven times coverage, and this is at existing uh revenues. So assuming no, you know, future rate increases, you're, what it tells us is we're able to do this plan. Now realistically, to do this plan, you may very likely, within the individual utilities, depending on the allocation of the debt, may need to consider rate increases. Um but as a whole, when you look at the combined pledge of the utilities, uh we're able to take this debt on. So that's really all the information I have before you this evening. I'm happy to answer any final questions.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for John or Lisa? I wonder if we could um just have a brief discussion of any thoughts that council members may have in, in seeing this information or any, any things that we might want to be thinking about moving forward. I've, I've got a couple of thoughts, but does anyone else have, have any things that are coming to mind that you want to talk about at this point? The two items that are kind of on my mind are um some big-ticket items that we will have coming forward that are not in our capital improvement plan. Um one is emergency services, uh both in the short term, a contract, and in the long term, possibly um a combined EMS, fire department. Uh the other is a wastewater treatment plant. So I, I guess I'm under the assumption, and Drake, you know, let us know if you feel differently, but for the wastewater treatment plant, I'm assuming that that would be revenue bonds um or rate increases or, you know, some combination of those. Would that be fair to say?
Well, we continue to explore opportunities for outside funding uh through grants or federal assistance or something of that nature. The most likely revenue source for it would be a low-interest loan from the Clean Water Fund at the state of Wisconsin.
Okay.
Um and so that would be, um that would be the avenue we would use to fund a project of, of that size.
So it'd still be borrowing, but it wouldn't be through revenue bonds. It would be through the federal, that federal state program. Okay?
Just, just to clarify on that, the, the state program, it would, it would still be a revenue bond issue. It would be a low-interest loan through the state versus saying, you know, these are revenue bonds that would be issued out in the open market where, you know, uh conventional underwriters would be bidding on it. The, the state for projects like the treatment plant has a, a special program uh which is called the Clean Water Fund Program, and that uh has subsidized interest rates associated with it for, for projects just like this. But it would still be a revenue bond.
Okay, thanks. And then emergency services?
Emergency services will be on the operating side. Um so it um, it comes into play as far as your budget, the totality of, of the budget. Um but it will, it's a different pot of money, if you will. Um so debt, um the city has more flexibility um with debt and managing its debt and issuing debt than it typically does on the operating side with the um imposition of levy limits uh to raise our property tax levy, which is the main source of revenue for the general fund, which is what is used to fund emergency services. Um now, uh for the contracted service, it's all general fund dollars, um because they're collecting the billing revenue, and then the per-capita rate is essentially the, the subsidy it takes to make that, that service um work. Um and so it, it, it's, it comes into play when you're looking at the total impact it has on um city residents, property owners, and businesses. Um but you're dealing with two different sides of the budget, you know, debt versus operating. Um you know, as far as, as debt goes, obviously, you can choose to cash fund certain, certain uh expenditures. Um that's mainly through your un, unreserved fund balance that you can spend it faster than you'll fill it up. Um but it is, it is at a healthy amount, so you can use it. The only other avenue of, of revenue um available to the council that we're not currently taking advantage of, that some communities have across the state because of restrictions on levies, is the imposition of a, of a wheel tax. Um so a, an additional local fee when you, when you register a vehicle that is within the city of Lake Mills. Other communities have them, other counties have them. Um and so that is, that is, that has to be used specifically for um like streets and maintenance and, and things like that. So it's specifically for transportation-related expenditures. Um but if you were looking for an opportunity to not utilize debt to fund projects, that is one that exists to the city council if it so chose. But beyond that, you've got debt, you've got your, your uh fund balance, and then you have that, that limited source, that one source of revenue that we don't take advantage of currently. Otherwise, you're in the, you're, you start considering delaying projects, spreading projects out further, and, and deferring maintenance uh in order to um avoid taking on debt that you'd be uncomfortable with.
Okay, thank you for that. And um one last thing, I wonder, maybe this is more of a crystal ball question than anything either for John or Drake, but uh the state legislature is, you know, actively working on their budget, and there seems to be a lot of momentum for trying to improve the funding that comes to local municipalities, but I know there's lots of discussions and haggling yet to happen. Um do we anticipate that that, that there will be some, some um changes in the state budget or um state legislature that will um give us some relief, you know, allow us to not need to take on so much debt? Will we know by May when we need to issue our bonds? I'm guessing not on that second question, but um are, are you following any of that? And do you have any sense of where we might get some relief?
Sure. I think it's still TBD. Um in terms of the, the timeline question, I would say likely not. You, you should move ahead, you know, on the, on the bond issue based on the information that you have at, in, in hand. Um but in terms of some, you know, the potential increases to state shared revenue, uh which is being talked about, I mean, I think that's still, as far as I know, on the table, but uh I think a little bit TBD. Um I know that both Lisa and I are going to a conference later this week where the, the League of uh Wisconsin Municipalities will be providing an update. So um if they have any hot nuggets of uh information, we'd be happy to bring it back in May, uh if, if, assuming we're back here again.
And I know just, in, if case other people aren't familiar, the state budget typically start, it goes, runs from July one to June thirtieth, and ideally, the legislature adopts it, and the governor signs it before July one. So like you said, that timing doesn't really match when we might need to do borrowing this spring.
Right.
Okay.
Ms. Curler?
Yes.
I'd like to reinforce that, that Table Three, where in 2024, it's showing that large general obligation debt. Uh I know that we'll review that as we get to our budget, but I'd like to get in front of that a little bit. Maybe we need to have some, a workshop uh sooner than later on that topic. A work session.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. I think that's, that's probably a good idea. Okay, any other questions or comments on this topic? Okay, thank you, John and Lisa, for being here tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next agenda item, um eleven B is a discussion decision on confirmation of the city manager's appointment of John Sampson to the Housing Authority for a term ending twenty twenty-four. So we don't have a written motion here, so I would be asking for a motion to confirm the city manager's appointment. I move to approve the city manager's appointment of John Sampson to the Housing Authority.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quednow. Uh Mr. Daly, any comments?
So this appointment is to fill um a, a term that expires in 2024 that's made, made open by, unfortunately, the, the passing away of a, of a, the member who was on the, on the uh authority previously. Um the Housing Authority Board likes to um maintain a resident on the board, and so John Sampson is a resident of the, of our um uh public housing. Uh that is under the jurisdiction of the Housing Authority. The name was put forward by the Executive Director, Stephen Pierce, uh and he's been a resident of that facility for, of that um building for several years, uh and is, is looking forward to having a chance to um have an impact on that community and, and provide assistance where he can.
Great. Any questions or comments? Okay, Misty, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Quedno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. Item C, uh discussion decision on the mobile home park license name transfer for Lakeland Trails uh MHC LLC located at eight sixty-five East Lake Street. Uh we've got some documentation, but not a prepared motion. Uh maybe Drake, do you want to just fill us in a little bit on this, then we can do a motion?
Uh sure. This is necessitated by um a sale of Lakeland Trails, so the, the owner is now, is different now, so there's a, there's a transfer going on. So this is administrative due to that transfer of ownership.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the name transfer?
I move to approve the name transfer of the, of the subdivision, or the Lakeland Trails, Wisconsin.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ms. Quednow, seconded by Mr. Fields. Any discussion? Okay, Misty, can I get a roll call?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quedno?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. Uh next, item D, discussion decision on bid award for Contract LM one-dash-two-three Concrete Curb and Gutter and Sidewalk Maintenance. Uh we have a proposed, a prepared motion. Misty, can you read that, please?
City Council Motion Twenty-three dash four dash two dash one, authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement for concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance, Contract LM one-dash-twenty-three.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Uh I move to approve. Sorry, let me look at the right thing here.
That's okay.
Move to approve uh City Council Motion Twenty-three dash four dash two dash one, LM one-dash-twenty-three Concrete Maintenance Agreement.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quednow. Steph?
Uh with your permission, I will turn it over to Duane to give a um overview of the, of the bids and the work uh that is going to be completed as part of this uh agreement.
Okay, Duane. Thanks, Duane.
Thanks, Mr. Daly, uh and Ms. Curler. Um this contract, or I'm gonna, I'm gonna combine both of these contracts in the conversation, but uh obviously you're looking at the concrete one first, uh one-dash-twenty-three. Uh these were talked about last March, or last month, when we talked about our maintenance schedule, um as well as uh understand that these two projects that you're about to talk about, uh combine street budgets from the, our budgets from the Street Department on the street maintenance, sidewalk uh assessment account, the sidewalk maintenance, uh the facilities and grounds department, including some work at the cemetery uh on, on one of the newer roads on the addition, and then upper and lower tyranny of park uh rehab to the parking lots. In addition, while not specific, um any kind of patching or other work that's done for any of the utilities, for example, water main breaks, uh patching in asphalt, uh repairing sidewalk, repairing curb, because of those uh activities are included in these contracts. Um the, the contract bid, I will say that I did review since March, I reviewed and we put the bid documents together. Uh we did review the Wisconsin DOT Chain Fisher Construction Cost Index, and we applied our costs from our last year's bid at concrete, uh in this case, and the conduct, the, the CCI said we should increase our estimate by sixteen percent, which we did. Uh so I want to note that while our opinion of cost was very close to the low bidder, I want everybody to understand that the construction costs are going up. Now, the good sign, the good side of this is uh the budget that we, that we had is still, we're still within budget. We will have to be very careful as we construct these projects uh and choose the repairs that we do throughout the year with staff. Uh but I, I'm happy to report that the bids that did come in are less than the budgeted amount for each of these items that I discussed earlier, for both the asphalt and the concrete combined. Uh there were two bidders, um Schweigert Construction and JB Johnson. Uh they have been uh the two contractors that have done work for you on these contracts over the last five years. Uh Schweigert Construction uh has been your contractor on this type of bid five of the last seven years, or five of the last seven contracts. Uh so we've worked very well with them. Uh they, they know the types of work that we're doing on each of these projects, and uh, and again, they were the low bidder in this year's uh bid. Is there any other questions that I can answer at this time?
Any questions? Ms. Curler?
Yes. Duane, looking at the bid tab here, uh Schweigert came in about five-thousand dollars cheaper because they had a zero-dollar amount for the unit price in total for mobilization. Can you explain that a little bit for me, please?
Uh great observation. Uh that has happened a, a number of times over the last five years. Because of their, and I, I'm making an assumption here, but uh because of their proximity to the city and their flexibility of being able to come in and out uh to do different projects throughout the city, uh they're able to put zero in that dollar amount because they are so close and so local. Um and you'll see the difference, uh really the difference in the bid was that line item. And for a number of years now, they have. And for a number of years now, they have bid zero under mobilization.
And Duane, as a follow-up, in the last few years where they've completed those contracts, have you seen any backend cost adjustment on this line item here? To say, oh, wait, we did have to mobilize something. Here's an extra dollar amount?
No, there's never been an extra for mobilization. In fact, many times they will ask staff and myself if during the year, if we have some small little pieces that we can get for them for a Friday. They really like that for their staff, so they can keep their staff local. And so it's kind of a win-win, I think. We can get a couple of little projects done piece by piece rather than having to find large chunks of projects. And they can keep some of their people local on a Friday when maybe their staff wants to stay close to home.
Thank you. That's helpful.
I will also note that they have also honored previous year's contracts, contract pricing before the following year when we have something unexpected come up that needs to be addressed quickly. They've honored the previous year's contract pricing to complete that work before the new contract has been bid and awarded. So we have seen, they have worked with us on the past for unexpected projects that have came up and honored the pricing even past the work that they were originally contracted to do.
Great. Any other questions for Duane or Steph? Comments? Okay, Misty, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Curler? Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Kuednow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Next item is Letter E, discussion decision on bid award Contract LM 2-23 Milling, Pulverization, and Asphalt, Concrete, Paving, and Patching. Misty, can you read that motion, please?
City Council Motion 23-4-2-2 Authorizing the City Manager and City Clerk to Execute an Agreement for the Milling, Pulverization, and Asphalt, Concrete, Paving, and Patching, Contract LM 2-23.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move to approve Motion 23-4-2-2 Authorizing the City Manager and City Clerk to Execute an Agreement for the Milling, Pulverization, and Asphalt, Concrete, Paving, and Patching, Contract LM 2-23.
Second.
Second.
Beat ya.
It's hard to get in quickly when you're on remote there. So that was a motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Kuednow. Steph, Duane, do you have anything you want to add on this one?
Sure. Just to reiterate, we use the CCI on this bid as well. As you recall, we did not have an asphalt bid last year. That CCI was 29% over the two-year period, so material prices are going up. As far as the bid itself, we had three bidders. Two of the bidders, or the two low bidders, have been your contractor on this type of contract over the last seven years. Wolf last did this project in 2019, but they also did it in 2015 and 2016 and are a responsible contractor, like the other bidders. And again, they were the contractor on three of the last seven years. Again, we discussed earlier that this all fits within the budget. I think on the asphalt side, we will have to be very careful when we're milling, milling these streets and paying attention to the material that's under so that we don't have extended costs related to binder patching and base patching related to this construction. That'll be on staff to make sure we stay under budget. But as of right now, the dollars do work with the budget as it sits. Are there any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Okay, so this motion would grant this word to Wolf Paving Company. So Misty, can we have a roll call on Motion 23-4-2-2?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Kuednow?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Next item, Letter F, discussion decision on Sandy Beach Restaurant Request for Proposals. We do have a prepared motion. Would someone like to make a motion? Oh, Misty, can you read that first, please?
City Council Motion 23-4-2-3 Authorizing the City Manager to Advertise a Sandy Beach Restaurant Bar Concession Facility Development and Operations Request for Proposals.
Okay, now can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion for discussion purposes tonight for a Motion 23-4-2-3 Authorizing the City Manager to Advertise a Sandy Beach Restaurant Bar Concession Facility Development and Operations Request for Proposal.
A second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Waters, second by Mr. Fields. Mr. Daley, turn it over to you.
Sure. So a draft of the RFP is included in your packet. I would, I would note, I would agree that the RFP is general and broad in nature, and I think that's for two reasons. One is I'm not sure that we've ever come to a consensus of exactly what type of facility that we are looking for at that location. And so it leaves it open to the proposers to make their pitch on what they think would be the best option out there. We certainly can be more specific on that, but I didn't feel that we had a consensus to put into the RFP at this moment in time. The second is that we don't necessarily have anyone on staff that is qualified to tell the city council how the restaurant should be operated and how a restaurant is going to be successful there. We don't have a restaurateur on staff. It's not expertise that we have, and it's not exactly our wheelhouse as far as operating a private for-profit business. And so we were reluctant to put something in there that may inadvertently make it infeasible to operate a restaurant there. So we certainly can put in more detail. But for example, the survey clearly showed that a banquet facility was not the most, was not the most popular option out there. But could it be possible that a banquet facility is what is necessary to make that the restaurant operate year-round? And is that a priority of the city council in order to have it operate year-round? I don't know the answer to that. And so it was left open to the proposers to make their pitch as to what would be the most, the arrangement that would allow for their best chance of success. So we, you know, there's other things we could look at specifically as, you know, square footage inside versus square footage outside of dining. We can specifically mention what type of dining we are looking for and what price point we are looking for, so we can make those changes. It was left open to be broad to allow the experts, the restaurateurs who have the experience in this to be able to make their pitch as to what arrangement would be, would lead to the highest chance of their success. But we certainly have control over exactly what we put into this RFP. And if there are specific things that the city council absolutely wants to see out of these proposals, then I would, then we absolutely should include them in this document. So if you know there's things right away that you don't want, or there are things that you absolutely do want, I think we should specify them in this in order to ensure that we are getting the most useful proposals back from the applicants. So if there, if there is a consensus from the city council on what to include or any changes you'd like to see in it, we can certainly do that and bring it, bring another draft back at a subsequent meeting. Or if you would prefer to have a work session dedicated to kind of fleshing out exactly the priorities of the city council and what they would like, and what you would like to see, we can do that as well. So this is a first draft. It does not have to be the final draft. But those are kind of some of the reasonings as to why it is drafted in a broad manner.
Thank you, Mr. Daley, and thank you for responding to some of the public comment that we received as well. So I guess I'll open up the floor. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
I'd like to thank Mr. Daley for putting together this initial RFP. I feel like in the past, maybe we were too broad in our ask and maybe we need to continue to narrow it down a little bit for this proposal. So I would recommend that we have a work session to discuss this sooner than later and to try to narrow down exactly what we're looking for as a council and use the feedback that we got from the community. We got some great feedback and it'd be great to use that in our RFP.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. Ms. Kuednow?
We had only two proposals the last time we put this out, and it was equally as vague. I think the concern at the time was that if we were too specific, then that would result in two, not even enough bids. And with only having two, we had to put this back out into work sessions to decide exactly what we were going to do from there. My concern about being too specific is that if we do that, it will limit, again, limit how many bids we receive. But then again, maybe if we're specific enough, people actually understand what we're looking for, and then there's no question, like, this is the type of restaurant we would like to see at Sandy Beach. I don't know. I don't have a crystal ball to determine exactly how that's going to play out. But I do remember that one complication to our last two, addressing Sandy Beach Restaurant last time was that we only had two bids.
Yes, that's right.
Ms. Curler?
Yes, Mr. Fields?
Yeah, one of the challenges, I agree with Mr. Waters, and I think we have put a little more detail to it. The challenge with these restaurateurs, if they come in forward and put these proposals, they stick a lot of money and time into bringing these proposals. And they don't want to be just throwing a dart hoping that it satisfies us. They want to have some kind of assurance that we're guiding them down a path that we're going to actually agree with them when they're done, or give them a chance. I think that was last time. I think we kind of said we were right in between the two proposals of what we were thinking as a council, where we need to tighten it up a little bit so that they do give us a proposal that we'll like and that they can make work. So I think we got to find, we got to put some more detail to it.
I was just going to say, in preparation of a potential work session, some things the council may want to think about to bring their thoughts forward on that is kind of what financing the city is most likely looking for? Is it looking for city ownership of the building with a long-term lease? Are we looking for a share of revenues or profits? You know, responsibility for maintenance of the facility and what ownership, who maintains ownership of any improvements that are made? Certainly what type of restaurant that you're looking for there? What level of service as far as seasonal versus year-round? Price point, maybe something that you want to discuss is there? Is there a specific menu price point that you're looking at? Do we want to specify, you know, how much exterior seating, for example, to have out there and how much interior seating to have out there? And do you even want to provide applicants with the opportunity to suggest a banquet facility? Or based on the results we got from the survey, is that not something that the city council is interested in? So those are some big, broad points that maybe we can get some specifics down into as far as what we're looking at to try and drill down exactly the plan that we would, that we'd like to receive back, to tick some of those boxes that we come up with. And then any other thoughts that you may have to include in it. But those are just some of my initial thoughts of specifics that we could drill down into for more detail.
Sure. Mrs. Bishop?
Mr. Daley, something I don't feel like I've ever gotten a clear answer on is the underlying work that needs to be done at the site in order to even put a restaurant there. And that's something that if we have a work session on this, I would like to get more clarification on as to what the city absolutely needs to spend there, even just to get, you know, a building on there and to move the rest of the Sandy Beach project forward. So I would like that to be considered in our cost discussion at the work session.
Thank you, Ms. Kuednow.
In response to that, I do recall that it was built into one of the phases. And that's why we are still waiting on doing the restaurant is because there was the question of what kind of food or what kind of service do we want to have there? That then would lead to whatever infrastructure would then be put in there, which would also result in the, in the, sorry, I'm having a moment here, in the parking lot to the next phase. So yeah, exactly where are we at with what exactly we need to do for infrastructure purposes? And to follow up with what you were saying, Mr. Daley, I also think that a lot of the questions that you put out there as the big chunk things were actually provided in the survey, based on the information that I was seeing and the research showing that, you know, we do, it appears that the majority of survey, people, sorry, surveyors believe that they want a family-friendly, affordable. And again, I'm going to kind of go back to what public comments said. Casual kind of makes it wonder, what does casual mean? And, you know, can people with bathing suits just walk into the restaurant? This is, you know, these are the kinds of things that maybe we need to establish a little bit more of a firm grip on. But it for sure was year-round, for sure was indoor/outdoor seating. I mean, that was 94%. And then, you know, just the fact that we have a good majority that would be willing to do a property tax increase to see this happen. So I think when we do our work session, we need to compile with, you know, without any doubt, what are the things that the survey did in fact say that our citizens indicated that this is what they would like? Because that is our job, is to listen to what our citizens are asking for, as well as put very clear-cut guidelines in terms of what that would look like. So that, I guess, you know, I'm not a restaurateur. I don't know. But my previous comment with saying that if we're too specific, are we going to lose bids? Stands still true, because again, if we're too specific, I'm worried that people are going to be like, well, I'm not going to be able to pull that off, and then we're not going to get any bids at all. But then again, it could be that I am wrong, and I'm totally okay with being wrong, that instead with it being specific enough, people know exactly what we want when they propose that bid. So anyway, that was my two cents.
So in preparation for the work session, I can bring kind of what the phased development plan for Sandy Beach is and what each phase of that entails and what exactly, what site preparation work and what is expected to be necessary for each one of that. So kind of a recap, the first phase was those, was the boat launches that was completed. The second phase was envisioned as the restaurant. And then we have, then, I can't remember if it's, what the exact phases are, but we had the parking lot that we had under consideration. Then we had the mobile home park, infrastructure improvements and improvements to that area. So the parking piece of it, just for a general recap, as far as whether to charge for parking or not, that's in anticipation of that there's going to be two phases to that mobile home redevelopment. And so there's going to be a period of time where the city is collecting no revenue from half of the mobile home park. That's a significant source of revenue for the city. And so the question becomes is, if there's no revenue coming in from that for a year while that's being done, what fills that gap? And so that is the, that was the original conversation, my understanding, is around the parking lot and what, and whether that could be a source of revenue for the city there. But the city council's never taken action on a direction on the parking lot, whether to pursue a parking utility or anything of that nature. So that is not set in stone, and it would still have a decision point by this body. That is just. That is just what was originally anticipated as an option, but no action has ever taken place on that specific item. So we'll bring some details on that phased redevelopment plan and what exact, our best estimate of what costs associated with that are to that work session.
I, I think that would be great, and, and just, even just a brief summary of what the anticipated next phases are, you know, proximate timelines, what, what kind of work would be done in each phase, what kind of decisions, you know, need to be made for each phase, because so far they're just planned phases, we could change things too as it goes down the road and, and because of the passage of time, we may want to refresh some of that. I guess I'd like to add a couple of thoughts as well. I think, Drake, you provided a good list of some of the things that we can be thinking about, that maybe we want to be more specific in an RFP of exactly what we're looking for. For example, like you said, do we want to own the land and building and lease it out versus, you know, selling or leasing a piece of property that someone else would own? That seems to be something we could, you know, make a decision on which direction we want to go. Other aspects, I think, and, and again, I'm flexible on this, but I think we could summarize what the community survey results showed within the RFP, but also let them refer to the survey. So rather than having each applicant, you know, kind of draw their own conclusions, we can take that information, which we did to inform us, and kind of hit some, you know, these are the key things that the community is looking for, so the top applicants will be ones that will, you know, meet those community desires, for example. So it could still leave the door open if somebody says, you know, I can't make this work without a banquet facility, it doesn't shut the door on that, but it still kind of expresses a community's wishes. So I think there's a, a number of things. I really appreciate Ms. Schmager and Mr. Quant coming today, they brought up, I mean, they took the time to read this document and they brought up some excellent points about things that we could modify, things that maybe decisions haven't been made on yet, you know, probably shouldn't be in there, but things that, and things that we know that we want or that we know could be factors we want to make sure we inform people about. So that's my two cents worth. Any other discussion or comments or questions?
Ms. Curler, seeing a hand from Mr. Quant, I move to suspend the rules and allow him to speak again on this issue.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from Mrs. Bishop to suspend the rules to allow Steve Quant to speak again, seconded by Ms. Quedno. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, Mr., we have a 5-0 vote on that. Mr. Quant, would you like to add something?
Yeah, I think I do. I'm, I'm not sure I can deliver on what I'm going to talk about. I have the privilege of working with two significant restaurant owners in Madison. One of them, in fact, did not put a proposal in on your original plan because it was too vague, and he just couldn't figure out how to do it. And he has a number of restaurants in surrounding communities doing largely what you're talking about. His biggest fear is how he's going to make it through the winter, and that's fair. I think, I think any of them are going to have trouble with that. The other one has done some really significant, excuse me, really significant, big developments, some of which you are well aware of. And Mr. Daly, if, if you're interested, I might be able to get one or both of them to come out and meet with you and give you some background on what it takes to do what you're talking about, because this is a big deal. There's a lot of money involved, and I see you've got a couple of million dollars budgeted for this, and those, those restaurateurs could spend a million dollars in furniture and equipment and all the rest of that stuff. So it's not insignificant. And if you're interested, I would be happy to make the inquiry and get back to you and maybe sit down with them for an hour and pick their brains.
Sure, I'd be happy to, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Quant. Really appreciate that.
I'll give it a whirl. I don't know if I can, I can get it done, but I'll give it a try. All right.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table that's been moved and seconded, but we're proposing to have a work session before we would come to that, back to that. So procedurally, should we just take no action tonight and then we can bring this back on a future agenda?
I would advise that the first and the second agree to withdraw the motion.
Okay.
And then you can move on and we can bring it back, we can get that work session scheduled and, and move forward with that process.
Okay, so we had, the, the motion was by Mr. Waters and the second by Mr. Fields. Mr. Waters, will you withdraw your motion?
Yes, I withdraw the motion.
And Mr. Fields?
I'll second it.
You'll withdraw your second?
Correct.
Okay, okay, great. So then we'll see this on another agenda in the future after we have a work session. Okay. So thank you again to the public commenters that really contributed a lot to our discussion tonight. So we're moving on to letter G, which is Resolution 2314, Claim Against the City from Terry O'Connor, 235 South Ferry Drive. I think we have a prepared resolution on this one. Misty, for resolutions, do you read those?
Yes, I read the title.
Okay, please do.
Resolution 23-14, Allowance and Authorization of Payment in Satisfaction of Claims Submitted by Terry O'Connor, 235 South Ferry Drive.
Okay, can I get a motion for this resolution?
I move to approve Resolution 23-14, Allowing and Authorizing the Payment in Satisfaction of a Claim Submitted by Terry O'Connor, 235 South Ferry Drive.
Second.
Mr. Fields, was that you?
Uh-uh.
Mr. Waters? Okay, thank you. I wasn't looking up. Okay, so we have a motion by Mrs. Bishop, seconded by Mr. Waters. Mr. Daly, or Mr. Drescher?
Unless there's specific questions, we don't have any further comment on that, on the item.
Does anyone have a comment or a question want to discuss? Okay, if not, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quedno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Next item, H, Resolution 23-15, Recognizing the Week of April 17th to 21st as Tornado and Severe Weather Awareness Week. Misty, can you read that title?
Resolution 23-15, Recognizing the Week of April 17-21, 2023, as Tornado and Severe Weather Awareness Week.
Okay, can I get a motion on this one?
I move to approve Resolution 23-15, which is recognizing the week of April 17th through the 21st of 2023 as tornado and severe weather awareness week.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Quedno, seconded by Mrs. Bishop. Anything, any staff comments?
I would just like to note that Thursday, the 20th, will be the statewide tornado drill. At 1:45 PM will be the first one. The fire department will be on-site at the schools observing their response to the, to the, to the fire drill and making any suggestions that they might have to, for their procedures. At 6:45 PM, there will be another statewide fire drill. The fire department will be at the high school, opening it up as part of their, their training and practice, as the high school is the, that's where individuals would go for shelter in the event of a severe storm, if they hadn't, if they did not have an adequate place to stay elsewhere. And so they will be there, they will be opening it up. We don't anticipate people coming to the high school at that time, but they'll be going through the, the processes and procedures that they would go through in the event of an actual tornado warning, and just as, as part of their general practice of staying prepared.
Any questions or comments? Don't take a good preparedness exercise for our community. Okay, Misty, would you do a roll call on 20, Resolution 2315?
Ms. Quedno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Next item, letter I, Resolution 2316, Public Depositories. Misty, would you read that title, please?
Resolution 23-16, Designating Official, Official Public Depositories.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 23-16, Designating Official Public Depositories.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, seconded by Ms. Quedno. Sam, any, or Mr. Daly, anything you want to add?
This is an annual approval.
Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, Misty, maybe we have a roll call?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quedno?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Last item under Council Business, letter J, Resolution 23-17, Official Newspaper. Misty, would you please read that resolution title?
Resolution 23-17, Designating Official Newspaper.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Go ahead. You want to go or you want to?
I move to approve Resolution 23-17, Official Newspaper.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Bishop, seconded by Ms. Quedno. Any staff comment?
We are required to make statutorily required notices and legal notices, and we do that in our official newspaper, the Lake Mills Leader, so this is an annual approval, designating the leader as our official newspaper.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a question. Is the leader published in the city of Lake Mills? I know that, that it's circulated in the city of Lake Mills, but I don't believe it's published here.
They do have a physical office located in the city of Lake Mills. I don't know that their physical printing operations are in the city, but they do have a, a local office within the city.
Can we strike that part from the motion and still be okay, strike the part about publishing in the city?
So you're looking at the first paragraph of the resolution, Mr. Waters, where it says, the second line, "published in the city"?
Yeah, let me pull that up.
Is that statutory language?
We just need to designate the official newspaper. It doesn't necessarily matter that it's published in the city or not. If, if there is a newspaper that's published in the city, they have kind of first right, but...
So you could strike it without any adverse effect.
Okay, Mr. Waters, do you want to make an amendment, propose an amendment?
Yeah, I'm still pulling it up here. So yeah, in that first sentence, I would just strike the "published in the ci," "published in the city."
So you're making a motion to...
Just strike that little part there and leave the rest as is.
So are you making a motion to amend Resolution 23-17?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the amendment to, the motion to amend Resolution 23-17 to strike the phrase "published in the city"? Can we have a roll call?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quedno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion to amend passes 5-0.
Okay, any other discussion or comments?
Just a question, Ms. Curler, would you need another motion to pass the resolution as amended?
I would have, I would take the, the motion, I, I interpreted the motion by Mr. Waters as a motion to amend the original motion to adopt the resolution. So you, the new motion is to adopt the resolution as amended, so that's what's before you right now.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, can we have a roll call on Resolution 23-17 as amended?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quedno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. So we are done with our council business, and we're at Agenda Item 12, Recommendations for Future Agendas. Mr. Daly, what do you have in mind for us coming up?
Currently on the docket that we'll, we'll be seeing shortly is we have a, a resolution requested by Ms. Curler in support of certain changes to the state funding formula for local government state aid. And then we also, we are also working on putting together some information and bringing forward the resolution proposed by Ms. Bishop for an ad hoc committee studying the mill pond. So those are the two items that we, we will certainly be coming forward here shortly. Other than that, I don't have any other items.
There is an ordinance that's been proposed by the building inspector to adopt a, a section of the state building code that we have previously not adopted. We contemplated bringing that forward at the next agenda. If you have any sponsors, I'd be happy to hear that. And I feel like there's another piece of business. Yeah, that for sure.
Mrs. Bishop, anything? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Waters.
We do also have the municipal building. I'm, I'm not sure where Mrs. Bishop is on, on that, but it'd be nice to, to get that updated. And we talked today about the work sessions, one for Sandy Beach and one for the general obligation debt that we reviewed during the ELLER presentation.
Mr. Waters, I didn't follow. What was the first item that you mentioned? Something about the municipal building?
I think that was for me, yeah.
Oh, the community center, okay, the policy, where's that one at?
Yeah, so I have a meeting with city staff this week on the 20th to finalize the most recent draft and go over last issues, and I hope to get that on the agenda in May.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fields, anything? Mrs. Bishop, anything else? Ms. Quedno? The only other things I had were, were, I think we're overdue for a check-in with our city manager, so closed session at the next meeting to have a check-in with Drake would be good. That's in our performance review policy. So a little more casual, not the formal performance review, but good conversation. And then I guess I'll be making council and board appointments. So what I recall we did the last couple of years is that each council member sent in their top three choices of board assignments, and I don't recall, Mr. Drescher, did they send them to you or the city manager or to me?
I don't specifically recall either. I'm, I'm comfortable with any of the above.
Okay, all right. Well, I guess if everybody would just, the four of you, just send your top three choices for a board appointment, just you can send it directly to me by email. If you could get it to me by Friday, that would be great, so I can work on that next So it sounds like we'll continue to be busy this spring. Okay, anything else? All right, then I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.